All right, we are going to start the Select Board meeting for August 7th, 2019. We are going to start right into the consent agenda. We have some minutes to approve from April 17th, 2019, April 25th of 2019, May 1st of 2019, and May 2nd of 2019. We have several warrants to approve. PR 1950, PR 2002, PR 2003, WP 1954, WP 1954 dash S, WP 1955, WP 1955 dash S, AP 2003, AP 2004, AP 2004 dash 2, AP 2005 dash V. We have a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Hadley and the Franklin County Solid Waste Management District for the hauling and disposal of sludge. We have a Hadley PD resignation of Jose Cabrera. We have permission for use of North Hadley Village Hall Ball Field. Hadley Girl Scout troop flossing along in campfire on September 20th, 2019, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We have a Hadley Police Department kennel license fee proposal. We have a COA van driver appointment, Stanley Kroll. A rate authorization for council on aging fiscal year 2020 budget adjustment. A one-day liquor license, malt and wine for North Hadley Sugar Shack bicycle event on August 10th. We have commercial development permitting and inspection protocol the Select Board is going to sign off on. We have our accountant services contract which the Select Board has asked to sign. And we have a Valley Bike Share Committee appointment of Andy Morris Friedman to represent the Town of Hadley for that committee.
Do we need to take anything out? Is the police coming tonight?
No, they're not coming.
The Girl Scouts are...
Jean Baxter is spearheading this and she sent along a letter of explanation, but she's got another appointment for tonight, so she shouldn't be here.
We're making a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No on... What's up with the kennel licensing? Exactly.
So, this relates to the solvency of the dog roof working fund. So, the kennel licensing fee is going to... The proposal is to increase that by $25 for each class of inspections for the kennels. This is for non-commercial.
No, either we have...
That I don't know. Not many.
At one point, they were thinking after the sub-fire station building is built, we're talking about adding a kennel up in that area on that property because we really don't want to be having dogs brought down to the DPW and stuff. So, that's kind of been the works down the line, so...
It's been spot for it.
Yeah. It costs us more money to send them to the veterinarians and places like that than if we were to kennel them.
But this...
These are just fees adjustments for kenneling out dogs.
This has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, this doesn't have anything to do with that.
No, I'm just making a statement that somewhere down the line, that that's what we're looking at. Is that all right, John?
Yeah, I just... I don't see any reason for these fees, that's all.
It's to go to the veterinarians and places where we have to take dogs.
Whenever they go to veterinarians, they should be able to take them to the vets and shouldn't have any effect on the police department or us anyway.
Isn't this... This is for places that kennel dogs?
Kennel dogs, like Amherst, who usually take them to Amherst.
If you're a pet hotel... No, this is like if you're at a pet hotel or something like that.
That's what I'm saying. Are these the fees for like the pet hotel?
That was my understanding.
Yeah, both, I think.
It was a little confusing when I read through it, so... I mean, up to 50 dogs. And everything except for the wastewater agreement.
Okay. Okay. Well, we voted on that even though we talked about it afterwards. I didn't say for any more discussion. I figured we... Nobody tabled anything, so... But we're good.
Yep.
Okay. Public comments? Is there anyone here for a public comment tonight? Okay. We have a 6:45 appointment with Kestrel Trust.
Actually, I don't think anybody from Kestrel Trust is going to be here tonight.
Okay.
Somebody from Applebee's is here, but do we have to wait until 7:05?
If you're here, we could do it now, or do we have to wait?
Do we have to wait?
Why don't you... Why don't you open the hearing and then we'll close the hearing after 7:05 in case somebody shows up.
Or do we want...
It's not going to take us 30 minutes to do it.
Yeah, why don't...
Open up the hearing, take care of the business. Don't vote to close the hearing until after 7:05.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we have an Applebee's change of manager for all alcohol license. Supplied a change of manager form. It looks like it's all been filled out, or it was just a letter? So, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of other documents.
Other documents?
Scott sent us...
The whole application.
Yeah, it's got information about federal tax ID numbers and social security numbers.
Are you the new manager?
I am.
Yeah. And what's your name?
Nicole Olivera.
Okay.
I'm assuming in the packet that we don't have it signed out on by the police.
Yeah, everybody's taken a look at it. It seems to be fine.
I'll make a motion to accept the change of manager for all alcohol license for Applebee's.
I will second that pending no further discussion until 7:05.
So, do we... Can we vote on it now, or do we wait to vote?
Oh, yeah, you can do whatever you want.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set unless somebody shows up before 7:05.
Yeah, you might want to hang around.
Yeah, I'll stay. I'm interested.
It'd be hard to explain to your supervisor.
I'm happy, I'm alive.
Everything was good. I left, it was great. So, maybe we could just go into new business, get some of these things off the list.
Tim from Municipal Building Committee is here if you want to...
Is anybody else from Municipal Building coming, Tim, or is it just...
I hope so.
Okay. Well, let's wait a little bit, okay? That's what I was thinking. I didn't know if more people would show up since it was after 7:10 that we would start, so can wait a little while.
There wasn't a real time down on that one, so I didn't really know.
Okay, we can wait a few minutes.
And the weather's a little quirky out there this evening.
You think? Can we do the senior service?
Yeah, I was going to do the senior service director job search update. The Select Board are asked to establish a search committee for a new senior services director. Our suggested appointments include David Story, Bruce Brewer with Rosalie Weinberg as his alternate, either Elizabeth Faulkner or Peg Wilson, Evan Bryant from the Fire Department, Lauren Triggs from the Police Department, Jane Nevin Smith. We're going to do David, but he's going to be on vacation, so he asked to not be on this committee. And two Select Board members, as well as Suzanne, as an advisory, no vote to review the applicants.
Yeah, I feel that if on vacation, I'm just going to slow the process down, so for the sake of expediency, finance taking under on this one.
Seems like a huge committee, but...
A lot of people wanted to be involved. And we had... The thought was if we nominate this committee tonight or appoint this committee tonight, we would start reviewing applications as soon as tomorrow and possibly have a meeting either tomorrow or Friday to kind of get the ball rolling.
So, how many applications have you got?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Eleven.
Wow, okay.
Did we average it?
Yes, appropriately. Deadline is Monday.
The deadline is Monday. So, we were thinking review as many applications as we can this week, kind of.
That process started the night that she handed in her resignation?
Yep.
The night that we announced it here.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so you opened it up then?
Yeah, we put the job...
I didn't know that it went posted. Okay. Well, it's a good number.
Most to approve.
So, we need availability.
We need... And so, we need two Select Board members.
Who's around this question?
I'm happy to be on the committee, but I am on vacation, not this coming week, but the week after.
When is the... When are you trying to meet for the first time?
Tomorrow.
Is it... Have you checked with anybody this either?
I checked with Lauren and the Fire Department. They're both available tomorrow.
Okay.
And the senior center people are available tomorrow.
Okay.
So, it's whoever's coming from you folks.
Right, but the question is tomorrow, when?
What time?
That's up to you because most of us are like... Well, they're...
No, I meant that they already decided that they want it during the day, or...
The fire station and police station people would like it during the day because they're airport.
Okay, so that leaves me out.
Yeah, it's too short of notice for tomorrow for me to make it there.
Yeah, I mean, I've got a client at 11:00.
Well, I can ask her if they can do it later.
I can do it if it's either like lunchtime or shortly thereafter, or towards the end of the day.
Yeah, I could do like noon tomorrow, but I can't do 1:00.
Yeah, so I've got a client coming at 11:00, so...
Yeah, I've got call at 1:00, but other than that...
I think noon would be appropriate. We can meet at the senior center because we have a nice conference room.
Okay, I mean, it's noon, I'm not going to get there till 12:15. I can't check a client out, sorry. Got to go.
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to start with procedural stuff and talk about how we're going to do this.
Oh, yeah, I'm totally fine. I think you've done this before, Jim.
I have done that.
Jane has a lot of experience, so she's going to be the head of this committee.
So, as long as you're okay with being late, then I'll just jump in as soon as I can.
And the other request I had, hopefully it won't be an issue, but with David withdrawing, which I appreciate, thank you, we have an even number. So, can we appoint both Betty and Hank?
Sure. That sounds fine, yeah.
But wouldn't appointing two more people still make it even?
No, because we were going to... Either or.
Gotcha.
So, can we have a motion? Did we make a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve this list.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Oh, there you go. It's your packet.
Oh, thank you. I have to put my calendar together.
Oh, yeah, I should do that, too.
Got your homework in front of you.
I'm just writing this down. Noon. We have... We have 6:42, okay.
We're not going to go to Kestrel.
Yeah, we're not doing that. Okay, so capital plan requests.
So, departments are handing in their capital requests, and we have a couple of departments that we're going to have to chase a little bit, but that's the usual course of these things. If you could... If you could have me put together the master list of capital requests, and we'll get that off to a capital planning committee. We should be able to get this worked out by the full-time meeting.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to just look at the schedule and make sure we can have a couple of meetings with the capital planning committee and get that all in in time.
Yeah, they have until October 7th to finish the work, so they've got some...
Okay. Okay, so we don't really have any votes there, just that we're waiting on some departments to submit their final plans. Valley Bike Share expansion meeting. So, we've had some progress with the Valley Bike Share program.
Is this what Andy Morris is doing?
This is what Andy will be representing us. There's a meeting on the 21st with all the current members involved in Valley Bike Share, and then all the proposed new members. Some... I forget who exactly the new members are. I think it's East Hampton, us, and it's not Holyoke, and it's not Chicopee. It might be Chicopee.
There's a nice article just ran in the paper tonight, yeah. East Hampton joined.
Yeah, East Hampton just joined. So, basically, this has kind of been fast-tracked, so to speak, because there was... With the Joint Transportation Committee and DOT funding, there was some additional money available in this round of funding for DOT projects. And so, this Valley Bike program was fast-tracked to be on the budget this year instead of four years from now. And they would like to have two stations in Hadley at the Mountain... The Hampshire Mall and the Mountain Farms Mall. So, David and I are trying to set up a meeting with the owners of those two properties and see what we can do to get bikes located there. We still have to work out the details of all this, but in my mind, it would be nice to have the bike station somewhere closer to the retail locations that people are going to want to go to, instead of having the stations closer to the bike path where people will be walking possibly, or leaving bikes in the parking lots, all those different things. So, if we could get the stations closer where they'll actually be, you know, shopping.
What did I see on Hamp? I was coming down a street from the hospital, Jackson Street.
Jackson Street, right in front of Hampshire Hets.
Yeah, that was in...
They're in use all the time there.
Yeah.
In... I mean, there's downtown North Hampton, downtown East Hampton, downtown South Hadley.
Are those the only two spots in North Hampton?
Oh, no, North Hampton, they're by Forbes Library, I'm pretty sure.
The library, there's a quick few, yeah.
Are these the electric assist ones?
Yeah, yeah.
And you see them all the time on the bike path, right?
Yeah, I see them all the time out there. I think this... So, I see us fitting in in a way where, you know, I would really like to see a station at Town Hall or at the new library, but the program is more wanting to get them at these retail locations. So, with the grants, what would be covered is the station and the bikes. The Town of Hadley would have to work out the concrete pad and having electrical nearby for these stations, you know, which could cost... I forget the exact numbers, but I want to say it's $5,000 per pad and however much the electricity could cost to put this in.
I thought the plan was to get donations from Rita.
So, the sponsor... So, that's another layer. The second layer is that the stations need corporate sponsors to fund their year-to-year operations.
Okay, the sponsorship's on the operating side, but the initial capital?
Yeah.
So, we couldn't get somebody to donate capital?
We could, we could.
CPA for that.
I think it's a perfect use of CPA.
Yeah, it could possibly be.
I was thinking of like getting Mr. Boldunk involved with Pride Station as he's got the electric there for the electric cars and things like that, putting in another pad for the bikes.
But the thing is, it's not really...
And the Valley Bike Share Committee is like they're kind of saying you need to put them here, or we're not going to give you guys a grant for the station right now. It is kind of the vibe I'm getting off of them.
Let's do it our way or not do it at all.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it seems like you've got the Hampshire Mall.
Yeah, grants.
Yeah, yeah.
You've got Planet Fitness at the Hampshire Mall that's the logical sponsor, and then we have LLB coming in and EMS right at the other mall.
Not to mention Whole Foods, Walmart, Target, you know, there's a lot of potential Trader Joe's, yeah. So, those would probably be the places where people would be visiting on these bikes. And there's a lot at UMass, too. There's a lot of stations there, so, you know, students at UMass would be coming down as well.
Can you put one at North Hadley Fire Station? I'm just kidding.
You can, if we want to dedicate money to purchase one there.
Smothering.
The Joyce Jungle Lo Bike Station.
We could put it on Gold Street, no problem.
Yeah, so that's the update as far as that goes. I'm on vacation with their meeting, so I asked Andy if he would be willing to be part of this, and he's going to represent Hadley at that meeting.
Sweet.
And more information, I guess, to follow as we meet with those property owners and see what we can do.
Can we talk to the CPA people and see if Andy's going to be representing?
Yeah, he's on CPA, yeah. He might have more information after the meeting on the 21st, what we can do.
Might get one vote there.
Yeah, I think.
I think maybe get two out of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we already voted that we weren't going to spend any money on it. We could get the donations when we were discussing it originally.
Yeah, we can see.
But CPA would have to go to town meeting anyway if we went that route.
Yeah. Anything else on that? Just an update? I got that. 6:50, okay.
West Street.
Yeah, I guess... Do we have any updates on the Mass Works grant application for the West Street Common? I see Christopher is here, so...
So, we have an opportunity for the grant. The deadline is Friday. Chris, working on the scope of work. Do you have any information for us? We will need a vote of the Select Board to authorize the application. It's middle of the application.
Tonight?
Tonight.
What are we asking for in the application?
The West Street Common?
Yes, the roads. Talking with CPA Andy and Andy Morris, he thinks that the roads may not be... May not give the requirement for CPA, so we won't use the Mass Works for the roads. So, I should be getting all the information by Friday morning.
Yes, sir.
I thought I'd be able to get them today. We had the meeting today, and the engineering individual who's working with me wasn't among the staff that came in, so...
But is this for resurfacing the roads? Is that what this is for?
Yes.
So, Mass Works is a roads program. You can apply once every three years, and typically they give out something like $300,000 for various projects. So, the roads around the West Street Common see a lot of traffic for residential streets, so there's a lot of wear and tear, and we should upgrade them.
I will just ask this because lots of constituents ask me about this. I live on Middle Street, so is West Street. I'm over there a lot, is, you know, would we consider putting speed bumps at all in along West Street to, you know, slow down traffic along there? Is that something that could be part of this grant?
Yeah. It's usually people like that, but it's not feasible. There are other ways we can reduce speed. Today, speed bump is not... It's not feasible. There was... A time was feasible, but study shows that it also creates some problems.
So, Chris, when you say there are other ways, whatever those other ways are, and you don't need to articulate them, but would those be considered so that as this project's going on, if there is any way to mitigate the propensity for people to speed?
Yes.
The past couple of times we maintained the West Street was just stone and oil, and that was pretty good to turn rather than paving it, so, you know, it kept them a little bit slower than making a major highway out of it.
Take it to dirt, really, set it back.
Yeah. And I think with speed bumps, you don't have any tire prints on the common now, but wherever you put those speed bumps, it's going to be a dirt track on the common.
Yeah, exactly. That's true.
I have to ask. So, do we want to make a motion for road improvements on the common or something along those lines to... So that we could submit this grant on Friday?
Make a motion to approve the DPW or David to submit the Mass Works grant application for West Street road improvements.
Second?
Okay, any further discussion?
If we are favored by a grant and you don't like it, you don't have to rescind it, so this is just permission to apply.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm staying.
We've got a... We'll wait on that. More people from the Municipal Building? Just two of you guys?
No, that's fine.
What do you guys want to... Are you prepared, or do you want a few more minutes?
So, I quickly put this together just to give an overview of some of the projects that we've all been discussing, and certainly the biggest one that is on everybody's mind is Russell School and what to do with it, and everything else that's associated with that. So, our hope was that we were going to have a paper for you guys to give you the overall cause and everything. I apologize with some family commitments. I was pulled away, so I couldn't do it. So, we... I've listed a few things, just to give you an idea where what we're actually working on right now and what's a priority. The first one is public safety. There's... As you are aware, there was a lot of critical issues with venting of the attic. We actually got up in there and came up with a really great idea of modifying it and simplifying it and reducing the cost. Everybody was up there between the architect. Gary Berg is actually the one that thought about it, and it worked. It's going to work out much better. We think it's going to be much more efficient. So, it did skew the scheduling a little bit, but we're still on track to do that very quickly. That's that first item, so that's going well. The second is certainly is the renovation of Russell School and the pricing. So, again, I apologize, but we're going to give you an overview of what those costs were. We have the architect that's on... That we have to help us on these projects, and he came up with a really good breakdown. The cost is excessive. We're looking at probably $20 to $22 million to fix that building to be able to utilize it. The issue with the building is that would give... After it's fixed, it only gives us a very small use of that building, and it's based on code issues and the, what we call seismic problems associated with it. Seismic is earthquake. That building being brick without any type of rebar, metal in it, if it shakes, it falls So, in order to use it, you can only use it for specific purposes that would not trigger getting into the seismic issue. We got into seismic, we're looking at doubling or tripling that cost up to probably $50 million. And of course, that's just... Gets to the point, there you go. Even though it's a great beautiful building, what do you do with it? So, what we're going to ask of you is what we've all been talking about is probably putting some type of vote to this, out for the residents to vote on what we should do with the building. Should we keep it? It is a beautiful building. It is right into the center of town. It's a very valuable piece of property for the town, but it would be very expensive to keep that building, renovate it, and use it. And the question then is what do we use it for with what we're doing right now? So, I think we need to entertain probably some type of non-binding vote to residents and give them an idea what can be done, what we're faced with. And if they don't want to spend the $22 million, do we sell it? But do we sell it in such a way? And we've talked about this. Is there a possibility of some type of mutual partnership that we still own the building to some extent, but allow, like we did with the Pioneer Valley School? So, they do all the renovations, but we...
Lease hold improvements for $22 million?
Yeah.
But you have to remember, when somebody privatizes or does it, it's not going to cost them $22 million.
Yes. It's going to cost them a third of that.
Because of prevailing wage.
Correct. So, that's the big difference.
That's the big difference.
We, as a town, cannot afford it right now.
Under prevailing wages.
I would be on a blue page again like the North Hadley Hall, you know? This time it would be a fallen chain over there.
So, how many square feet is that roughly, that building? Do you have any idea? Ballpark.
Six thousand square feet.
Yeah, something around that.
Six thousand, three levels.
You got two classrooms on each floor.
I mean, have we looked at tearing it down and building something in its place that's similar?
I mean, you could easily... I mean, you built the senior center for, what, $7 million?
Yeah.
And that's 10,000 square feet, so...
Yeah, one floor.
Yeah, one floor, but still, I mean.
Or do you want to sell the building with historical restrictions on keeping the facade of the Russell Street School as it is and letting them use it as they deem necessary?
I can just imagine the tax impact of a 22 million dollar project and the hollering we got about the senior center of the library, even though.
We would all be going to our grave.
I mean, there, there also are options with CPA possibly.
Oh, no, no.
Which we haven't worked completely, which we could investigate more.
I talked to CPA and he was talking about matching grant from historic preservation and turning it into the town hall. And it is possible.
It is possible.
And I think your numbers are a little high.
Oh, no.
Well, a long, long, long time ago in a land far away, they were 12 million.
Yes. Now we're at 22. I don't think those figures are that far off. I mean, he spent a lot of time going through with professionals in that building. We did some destructive testing to see what was in the walls. I, I personally don't feel, based on what's out there going up now.
I mean, even, even David Tudor, he renovates old buildings all the time.
And he said.
Exactly, I mean, this is his job, his life, you know, that he knows what these old buildings are. So nobody can better tell us exactly how much it would cost to make that handicap accessible, all rewiring, all plumbing, the whole nine yards. It's sinking on one side and it's been sinking, that's why we moved elementary out of there. So I mean, there's a lot of things going on with that building that we can't address as a town.
Right. And then we talked about possibly using some CPA right now to minimize the destruction that's actually happening with, with some stairs.
So given the sensitivity of this particular building, and I, and I think it is more sensitive than anything because it's our town center. Before we go to just sort of a referendum type of thing, would it be worth having a committee formed targeting people with?
Oh, you go with another committee? Holy mother of.
A committee that Joyce does not have to be in.
I thought it was a meeting. I wondered what I was doing there.
I think municipal building committee can take it so far, right? But then what about people on the private sector who might come in to give us a better sense of, is that a viable option, right? What, you know, what if we put it out there? And I'm, I'm thinking, you know, the Barry Roberts types people of the world, or Berkshire Design, or somebody else that could come in. I'm just worried about throwing a jump ball up, you know? And they say, oh, tear it down, and people are speculating and you've got 150 opinions unencumbered with any facts whatsoever. You know, how, how could we bring more information to the people of the town so they can make a really good decision about this?
And we should spend some time figuring out what the options are with regard to partnerships or whatever, ways that can make. We need some professional help and guidance to figure out, is there ways that municipality can work with somebody and get around these crazy insane prices?
Maybe we could talk to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and just ask them, how do, how do we go about this? How do we get that skill set? And then if it does require money, then maybe we go to CPA and ask them to help out with that because they've done that kind of thing before. I, I just hate to just throw it up with no information.
Yeah, I hate to have the options to be, we tear it down or we sell it or we fix it. Like what else, you know? Are there more options? Because I feel like that's a really historic part of town. We want to preserve it as town property, town hall, something. And I'd hate to lose that, you know, piece of land as part of town, personally.
We're getting rid of North Hadley Hall. And this is, these are the last three historic corners you have in Hadley.
Yep.
Right here, right now.
You gotta keep it so.
And I am not for taking one out, absolutely not. It's the only history you got left in town.
Yeah.
So I heard Molly comment, make a comment about take it down and rebuild it to look the same. How does that go in terms of feasibility?
Well, the unfortunate problem in New England, anytime that you're getting into bricks, the, the price is astronomical for us. So how do you mimic the building? It would be in some type of a brick facade, which is costly for any municipality to do. But certainly, over time, it's the best material for longevity.
You asked, did that with the West Experiment Station? Took it down, rebuilt it, new burnt, not, not everything old. And, you know, you can tell it's new, but it looks the same. So it looks pretty good. I don't know what the cost was, but you know, it done it.
But that'd be great to have those options in front of people. You know, 22 million dollar price tag, 11 million dollar price tag with loss of ownership and control, you know, whatever those are.
And I think along those lines of possibly rebuilding, if we decided we didn't want to spend the 22 million dollars, we wanted to spend, say, 100,000 dollars now to knock the building down, leave it in green space for a few years until we decide that we need to move town hall across the street and build something new and kind of stretch the, the cost out over five, 10 years or something along those lines. And then we could build something that looks exactly the same, kind of preserve that land at the town center so we're not selling off our town center. But then, you know, the taxpayers aren't getting hit with a 22 million dollar price tag right after they got hit with 13 million dollars.
You won't, you won't get it.
No, but I think, I think it's good what municipal building's doing now is they're teeing it up and saying, I'm not hearing anybody suggest that we make a decision this year and go out to. But this is, we need to set the wheels in motion.
So is there anything on special town meeting warrant that's gonna require a ballot vote afterwards at this point?
Probably.
Oh, yeah, the answer is right down the note, but there probably will be.
So can we?
We could put on that.
Get a committee together so that way they can do some work and hopefully have something ready for that election?
Well, some scenarios, that's all we need is to have, you know, choices.
What we do need is to fund the line item for the architect. We're down to only a couple of thousand dollars, I think, aren't we, David? We're getting low on it.
I think we have another 25,000 dollar article, don't we? That we can access after July 1st, which is already.
Oh, okay, great.
So, but I'll, I'll check in with David.
Because we're gonna need his help on going, giving us some scenarios.
You might check out the town of Princeton. They have a building that very similar to this that they renovated completely with using CPA money. You might check in to see how they did it.
Well, it's, it's loaning out on CPA, I mean, that's the.
Our, our biggest problem is getting them to even somewhat cooperate.
But you can borrow against CPA money.
They, they would be willing, the.
But you're not gonna be borrowing 22 million.
Couple of them that I talked to said they would be interested in a project like this. If we could get a, a grant, a matching grant from historical preservation or, or some other means of funding, you know, half of it. And I think it's possible. Every, every other city and town throughout the country are, are doing it on their historical buildings. Nobody's, nobody's looking into that, you know?
Well, and I think the reason nobody's looking into it is because, again, we're running with part-time volunteers who are trying to get this stuff done in their spare time, so. So if we could find some people to help municipal building, then maybe that legwork could be done, whether it's PV, PC, or, you know, basically the logical go-to.
I mean, Springfield just did it with, with a couple of their historical buildings. That was all, all matching funds.
Molly's point is what the problem is. We're, everybody here in this town is pretty well saturated with. And one of the things I couldn't even do the report because of what's going on down here. Springfield has full-time people to deal with all this stuff. And they have.
West Town Planner.
Yeah, we don't.
As does Northampton, as does Hampton County.
And we don't have the people.
Doing the.
The manpower anymore. Because we're all doing our own jobs.
The courthouse over there, that's all being renovated and redone. And it's the same type of structure as what's sitting over there on the corner. It's all that type of stone and brick over there, same thing.
So I'd like to make a motion that we authorize municipal building committee to, at their pleasure, reach out to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and determine what resources they need to get the information that we're talking about in advance of a potential ballot referendum after the, you know, fall town meeting.
Can't make a friendly amendment.
Sure.
Also authorize a committee to be formed of interested residents that can brainstorm some ideas as well at the same time.
That would be a separate committee then to the building committee?
Right.
Yeah, we work with them.
Subset.
So it's sub of the sub building committee?
Yeah.
Are, are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Anybody interested to, to contact us or the building committee?
Yeah, because I think there are a lot of facets. It's like financing of it, you know, CPA grants, and then there's design options too. What could we possibly do at that site or that building?
But realistically, we need to get a committee formed, or we need to get a committee appointed probably our next meeting in order to let them meet a few times before, you know, election time. So that way we can get unfollowed.
Yeah.
Great. Just to put a B in everybody's font, if you borrow against CPA, there's no impact on taxes.
Well, that covers 3 million.
Borrow, borrow.
Nineteen ago.
You could leverage that 3 million and take more.
Yeah, much more, yes.
But we're also talking about reducing our CPA from 3% to 2%.
I'm talking about using information.
We have a lot of options.
And I'm just saying what we've talked about, so.
Just throwing in the information. So the third item on that is, we want to look into using some CPA funds to try to stabilize the exterior facade, especially on the west side. And we're gonna look into that, go back to you. I, I hope we have your support to be able to use CPAs for that.
Then you need to set something up and go to CPA committee when their next meeting, before town meeting.
This is tight.
Their due date was August 9th, I think.
Due date's coming right up.
Yeah. Oh, that's Friday, sorry.
Yeah, that's right. Who can do that?
Yeah.
Because they always want everything written in stone, what you're gonna do with the money.
Maybe we, given the.
How about a place card?
Maybe we can get them to schedule another meeting in September.
Yeah, placeholder for.
Placeholder, like we do placeholders. If you do a placeholder with them, just something in writing saying, we are looking to do, need some money to do the facade of the Russell School, can you meet again in September? Before town meeting so that we can have something put together?
We'll do that. The paint, the next one, item is the painting of the, the town hall pillars. The architect assured me that he's gonna get those specs immediately. I've talked to David. We want to go out to bid on that right away and get that going. And the next, the next item is the new parking lot. I've talked, I did talk to Mark Darnold, Berkshire Design, and he is guaranteeing the price that he had, the 16,000 plus or minus, depending on what you want to do, if we have to go to ZBA or not. I don't think we really have to go to ZBA, but we, we do have to go to planning board, so we could use that services for that. So it's looking at like 16,000 for the design work. We need your authorization on it.
Yeah, we had the estimate for the, the design work. Was there an estimate, just a ballpark project price or something like that?
For some reason, there was, when, before DPW, I think the price tag was 250 to 280 to put it in. And there were some questions in regards to the, what was needed for drainage. There was back, some back and forth discussion on that. But that's, I think, what we're probably looking at for a price.
Could Chris help in that, Chris?
And Chris has been, yeah.
Can we do something with free cash, or are we gonna have enough free cash to do a project like that on this?
For the design?
The, the design?
Can we get the design at least going so we can give it, hand it over to Chris and start getting some prices?
I was just gonna say about constructing it. If we're using that area, I saw them setting up construction fence over there. Are we gonna, when would we be able to plan this parking lot? Is it gonna be two, two years?
The senior center and the library will be built, so you won't even be able to utilize it.
It probably, probably won't be until they're done with constructing the library, correct?
That's totally up to you guys. I think it could be started next, next season, if you wanted it.
Next, next year?
Yeah, because.
Yeah, the, the senior center and parking lot will be done in April theoretically, so they could move some of their staging over there.
They're looking to pay you the senior center, I believe, in fall time, in November.
By November 28.
Before November 28th, when the asphalt plant's closed. This year.
So, yeah, I guess we could.
So I don't have a beat on free cash at this time, so I'll be getting those numbers. So the answer is it's possible.
So let's, can we have a placeholder on the warrant at least for the 16,000? And then if we have to pull it because free cash is not available, we can do that?
16,000 for design?
Is that, is that all we need to get in?
Is it on your capital request form? Is that your capital request, that, that guy?
Yeah, that's a draft that we put, put together.
Do we need to vote on that, or are you okay just doing that?
I'm just gonna take it as instruction. We'll take the formal votes when we have all the capital, all the files together.
And if we don't have the money, then we don't have money.
Address it at time.
Unless you put that on top of the list of capital.
Six is the Goodwin Memorial Library, the original, the existing one, we're postponing for the structural work and whatnot. And then the West Street Commons are the only thing that we might be working with. Everybody on, with Chris and all, would be the gazebo, if we want to go forward with that. So whenever, we can always resurrect that. I still have all the information from we, what we compiled before. So if the thought is to go forward with that, we can get that going pretty quickly. Any other questions?
Somebody still needs to talk to Historic Preservation on that common. If we can even build anything out there, really.
I couldn't hear you, John, I'm sorry.
Talk to Historic about building something on a common?
We need to make sure that somebody brought up, they thought that we. We could, but we think we can.
We should. Why not? It's just, we want to use, utilize it for future use. Well, we had, for the last few weeks was fantastic, a lot of people liked that. And I think we should try to go forward with something that we have, have a central building to work off of, I think.
Yeah, I don't think he was throwing up an obstacle, I think he was just saying, make sure that's on the checklist.
Yeah. And the last time, there, there's not many people on that anymore, but the last time I checked, they, that was up to us.
Yeah, they didn't have any problems.
They didn't sign up too much.
Yeah, we're all set?
Any other questions?
Sure, yeah, we can do that. And so we're all set with municipal building? Yeah, I was gonna do that. All right, Applebee's, is anybody here for Applebee's? All right, you're all set.
I actually, I like.
You want to be on a committee?
Maybe something.
Um, okay, let's do the poll hearings since I think some people are here from Eversource. Uh-oh, my computer went to sleep during that, and I don't have the content. But are, is someone here from Eversource for the poll hearing? Yeah, go for it. Where, where are we putting, where are you requesting for a poll?
Good evening. So this isn't actually for a poll.
Oh, okay.
But it is for equipment in the town taking. This is for a new pad mount transformer on Ventura Way. There is a new kind of commercial, like office building going up in there. And to power them up, there's an underground loop that goes around the hole of Ventura Way. So in order to give that power, we need to cut into the existing feed underground, splice it, and then place a new transformer, and that's how we're gonna power them up.
And it's on a town road?
It's.
It's Ventura Way, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the, you know, in the town taking. So I think it's 23 feet off of the central line of Ventura Way.
It's just up from the pump station over there.
And that's good for, been approved by the DPW director, that location? I'm just thinking like snow plowing or anything along those lines.
It's underground.
How far?
Oh, it's underground?
It would be a problem.
Yeah, how far off the road you put in the box, same as the other ones?
23 feet from the central line of the road.
From the central line? That's what we set back a little bit.
Yeah, it's in our best interest to make these, you know, so they don't get hit by cars and so. Yeah, it's in our best interest to make these, you know, so they don't get hit by cars and so snow plows don't, you know, approach nowhere to them. So we take the precaution to design these, so.
It's also where we all teach our kids how to drive.
I actually think when I, I went to Steve Lewis and test drove a car, and I think they, he took me there too.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in paper.
Aye.
Okay, all set. Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Till next time.
Okay, we had a seven o'clock public hearing for sewer rates. Well, we had a change here. This is some changes. I don't know if Christopher or anyone wants to describe it, but basically we are just proposing here to change the commercial sewer conservation rate from six dollars and sixty-seven cents to seven dollars and thirty-four cents per hundred cubic feet. It's a ten percent increase in those rates, and that only affects the largest commercial customers on our sewer system. So this would be, for example, hotels, nursing homes, those kind of things. Would have no impact to residential rates or the baseline commercial rates. I don't know if somebody wants to say any more, or?
I'll make, I'll make them all until the steps are.
Oh, quick.
I have a comment.
Of course.
Um, why is it ten percent? And why are hotels also affected that already pay occupancy tax? And we also pay a large sewer impact fee when we do construct? I feel like, in our opinion, and anyone else who does new construction, who has, for example, like us, is getting double taxed here.
Or more.
Or more. And it's quite, quite unfair.
The impact fees are ridiculous enough, which does help the department out. But yeah, this is just tax on top of tax on top of tax.
My only comment is I think we're putting the part before the course here. We've got some things on the cloud that we can warrant to fix the situation of the enterprise funds. And like I said previously, once we get to that point where we know where we stand with those changes or those fixes for the enterprise funds, if we have to increase rates, I think it should, you know, be taken up at that time. I don't think just throwing rate increases here and there is going to fix the problem that we have long term.
So I thought that what we were going to do tonight was definitely open hearing back up. But I thought that we were going to hear from Chris and Sue more about this and not, not just have a number. Because I don't know where the ten percent came from either. But I, I know that we had talked about doing this in terms of, of looking, okay, sure, it's just one band, like the commercial, to see whether or not we needed to do both residential and commercial, or whether we could just increase commercial. But it should be fit in the context of a financial plan and.
I understand that, and I understand.
Because otherwise, we can't even answer your question.
No, but I understand, and I'll give you the fact that the DPW does need a lot, for example, an office. As a town resident too, and, and a local business owner, I understand what you're making do of what they have. I appreciate that. In terms of the business aspect, that's my point. I feel like we're being double taxed and targeted here in this aspect when there are other commercial buildings and businesses that use more water than a normal residential well, other than just hotels and nursing homes.
Yeah, I, I was actually hoping that we would be able to, so where we last left off was when we, when we met to talk about the proposed increase for sewer. We were looking at an across-the-board increase, and that goes back to what David Phil just said. It's like, wait a minute, you know, how do we even explain this to everybody? At the time, everybody who had the information wasn't in the room. And we found out after the fact that, no, we didn't have to do an across-the-board increase. So that opened up this conversation to other possibilities. And I was hoping that we could spend a little bit of time talking tonight from an educational standpoint. We've got some new board members too. How does this actually work historically? What have we done? What is the amount of money we're actually, what's the problem we're trying to solve? And then we could have a more intelligent discussion about, does it make sense to just do the seventy-five hundred plus and just hit the hotels and the nursing homes, or do we do all of commercial? Do we do them differentially? I, I may not have any of that information.
So I think in general, we're, we're looking at two different kinds of problems that we're trying to not solve, but partially address through this proposal. The first is, is that you have a solvency issue with the sewer enterprise fund. You just don't have enough money coming in to cover your expenses. The other is a plant capacity issue. Okay, so we're crowding or perhaps even above the eighty percent capacity of the plant. So we have to encourage people to reduce their consumption of water, which translates into their outpour of sewer. And so whenever you have a tiered system that is built into the, that, trying to address that problem, that if you have people that use a little bit of water, a little bit of sewer, then they get charged a rate which is below the rate charged by people who use a lot of water and generate a lot of sewer because both, because you're trying to encourage that conservation. If they can reduce the amount of water, then enjoy the lower rate. If they can't do that, then they have to pay the higher rate to cover our costs of maintaining both the water treatment plant and sewer treatment plant. So that's one issue. The other issue is, is that this proposal here is estimated to generate about forty-four thousand dollars per year, which doesn't address all of your financial issues with the sewer enterprise fund, but it, it helps. It demonstrates to the world that you're looking at this and taking the problem seriously, and that you're willing to take some steps in order to generate revenue for an enterprise fund which is struggling just to keep up with its operations.
Yeah, I get all of that, but, I mean, in order to, for the board to make an intelligent decision on do we increase sewer rates now, yes or no? If we increase sewer rates, whose rates do we increase? And then three, by how much? And so I'm looking at commercial and residential. I mean, how, how much of the, so you're talking about the plant, right? So, I mean, I think there needs to be some logic behind it. So if we're running into capacity issues, sitting here, I have no idea who the, how much of the plant is residential, how much is baseline sewer, and how much is exacerbated by the bigger sewer users? Like, what, what's the usage percentage?
There are sixty-six.
The lady in the van.
There are sixty-six sewer accounts that go into, go into the conservation rate. That's all. And they, and the sewer plant treats approximately two point three million cubic feet of sewage from those sixty-six accounts. That's almost as much as is treated for the whole rest of the town. So it is, I mean, the impact from these accounts is, is driving capacity.
Okay. So, I mean, that, that's.
That's where I.
Good information to, to have, and it's a, a piece of the data that we.
You took the usage fees from the commercial.
Yep.
Buildings.
Yeah.
Quick question. Are apartment complexes included in those, or are they separate?
Yep, we don't, we don't have apartments.
There's green leaves.
Green leaves.
She do.
Oh, let's try, I keep them in condos.
Green, green leaves doesn't affect the town of Hadley sewer. Green leaves is used in town of Hadley water, and it's going to ammer sewer.
Right.
So.
How, of those sixty-six customers that are in the highest rate there, how close are they? You know, how far over that seventy-five, that hundred cubic foot threshold are they? Are they way over? Are they close?
A lot of them are.
Okay, because.
I mean, some are close.
So step with this other piece of, we have a schedule here that shows access fee FY eighteen to two thousand twenty?
Rates. Those are the rate fees. Yeah.
Those are rates, okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, no, no, go.
Okay.
I don't know if we have what you were talking about.
No, I just did this the other day, but, so, you know, you've got restaurants who are typically higher usage. Country Nissan, you've got Big Y, the car washes, those are, the hotels. And then you have small stuff. But.
No free car washes at the hotels.
Not yet.
The nursing home, I think, is one of our largest.
I would imagine.
I would imagine.
Genesis, yeah.
Residents there.
And the reason I'm asking is because as part of a big picture rate increase or rate change, if our goal is to encourage people to conserve water and save on capacity, then, and I don't know what the state laws are as far as water rates, so this is for, for you guys as well, but would it not make sense to maybe break down the rate structure so that way someone's encouraged to drop down to that next tier if they install water-saving appliances, things like that? And then, you know, if someone really does have to stay in the highest tier, then maybe you do need to increase on them. But then at the same time, you have some encouragement to save some water and to.
But then bear in mind, when we save water, then people aren't paying.
When you build.
Exactly. Kind of a double act.
I got a question. When you built the motel, there was incentives to put as much low-flow everything in as possible, wasn't there? For the most per.
For the most part, we tried to.
Yeah.
You know, it's more on the electrical side that they try to make you conserve. But, yeah, we try to do the most efficient.
Yeah, it's your profitability, I think, if you say, so.
But my other question is the sewer impact fee that we paid for two developments, what does that go? I thought that was supposed to go to this capacity issue.
Yeah. And a lot of it does. A lot of it goes towards capital really in, in, in the wastewater.
But that capital is supposed to be addressed from your capacity issues.
See, oh, Jesus, back ninety-four maybe, I think? We had a specific impact fee for the commercial area, pump station two. And the way they had wrote it, I'd like to get a, if anybody can get a copy of that, oh, I might have it, we might have it. And bring it in and show you how we wrote that. That was when they proposed this impact fee, that was before the impact fee, and, and X amount of dollars per gallon pumped at that pump station went towards replacing the pump stations. You know, to upgrade that area for, for the commercial, anything that went through there. But since that, we've upgraded two more, two more pump stations and been added commercially. But one pump station has been added residentially going through that station now, for the Act for Protection, up around Holly Road and Mount Warner and that area.
So on this, do we have any motions, or do we have anything we want to push forward on this? Any action items? I feel like we've gone around, but go ahead if you want to keep going.
From a competitive, not competitive, but.
Market rate.
Thank you. From a market rate standpoint, how do these rates compare with neighboring communities?
We're low. Northampton, their residential and commercial rate is seven eighty-eight per hundred cubic foot. Southfield, sorry, Westfield was, I think, eight. I mean, we're low. And, you know, I did some calculations a couple of years ago, and I figured in order to meet our operating expenses for sewer, we would have had to increase the rates forty-three percent. Because we didn't increase rates since two thousand and seven. I mean, you know, and you're still, you still have the expenses. You're negotiating union contracts, you're, you've got fuel costs, you've got, you know, transport costs, but the rate stayed the same.
And we don't.
You know, we're treating, we're treating a half a million gallons here. Northham is treating, how many million gallons?
Yeah, it's kind of a per capita thing because it's still per hundred cubic feet, so.
That's equalizing. So, and from a timing standpoint, I think when I had stopped to see you, if, if we didn't vote for any change tonight, that next billing cycle that would be affected isn't even until, what, February?
February.
Right?
Yep.
So, so if we were to vote any sort of change tonight, it would show up in the February billing.
Exactly.
So that's just one, one quarter. Yeah, two quarters of next year, right? So it would affect half a year's revenue. So the forty-four is early forty-four thousand, it's actually twenty-two thousand.
Right.
And then you would feel full effect of it for a year later.
Yeah.
So, all right, I'm going to make a motion. In the midst of Adam's frustration that we can't seem to get a plan with, with numbers and having people have fully communicated before we're sitting here, and I'm going to respectfully ask the board to do something. And I'm going to propose a five percent increase and just cut this in half on the largest tier. And I really want to try to keep this conversation going and try to come up with a fully vetted plan, but just try to do something.
I'll second, yes. And, yeah, I just want to say too, I know we have these other plans in the pipeline to go to town meeting and come up with some other options. However, those are all have to go through town meeting and get approved. And so if those fail, we could be looking at having to increase the rates even higher than what we're looking at right now. And to me, doing some incremental rate increase, especially if it's keeping within market rates, that's, that's probably a good idea. And, you know, personally, I, I think I qualify for that rate for my business. So I am bringing this up on myself, so, you know, but looking at the numbers for the town, we need to do something.
Yeah, I don't think there's any argument that a rate increase is going to be required. The question is how much? And who's going to bear the cost of that increase? And we can't figure that out until we know what makes it through town meeting and where we stand and, and exactly what we're going to do about the big picture here. If we give a, a rate increase to the highest commercial customers, you know, that's, I guess, a step towards raising some money, but that doesn't solve the, the problem. There's no way that forty thousand dollars can be close to solving the problem. So we're going to be right back at this. And, and the reason why I'm saying wait till after town meeting is because then if I have, if I have to take phone calls from people and say, hey, why are you raising my rates again? I say, hey, we tried to fix it at town meeting. We tried to do the best we could. You guys turned it down. This is where we're at. We have no choice. We got to raise it fifteen, twenty percent, whatever it has to be raised.
Yeah, but I know eleven thousand sounds like a drop in the bucket, but again, it's just something. And then if we have to institute some, you know, asking people not to water their lawns and all of that stuff in the meantime, in advance of town meeting, you know, because our DCW director.
You're compounding the problem that way. They're not using the water, and the water in the first place isn't even going into sewer. But the operation costs are still the operation costs.
We want them to water their lawns more, actually.
Wash your car and water your lawn.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion on that?
I'm kind of in favor of waiting until town meeting too, because.
I'm kind of in favor of waiting until town meeting two because like David said, we had put some things in place. And certainly, um, looking at this meeting right after town meeting when we get our votes in, I think would be more beneficial and then we can institute it then at that time.
And I'm potentially gonna be going back to Key Shore and asking for a ten fifty or twenty percent increase. I don't think they're gonna be very happy.
That is true, that, that very well could happen if nothing passes town meeting.
I mean, I agreed with the five percent water when I did that. And the, and the five percent now that I'm, that you're asking, I, I can kind of go along with that also, but, you know.
Can you kind of go along with it just a little bit more? It's, it's sixty-six businesses and, and again, I'm not trying, but, but the hotels, I mean, ultimately it gets passed on to the consumers, I mean.
That's true.
It will be.
It will, it's just from a development standpoint, it's just, we paid a sewer impact fee to help and we understand, we might not agree with it, but we understand it to mitigate this. At the same time, as a resident, I understand, and as a business owner, cost increases are high. And reiterating what David said, this is, this seems like a small banding across something that needs a bigger fix to it. And I feel like, again, we are being targeted for this only. And, um, no one likes to raise taxes, I, as a resident, I, I mean, of course I don't want them raised either. But again, it's just, we paid it once, it seems like we're paying it again, in my opinion.
Yeah, you know, in a town meeting, the way I've been bringing it forward here is if we went according to the water and according to the sewer needs and we went for capital expenditures and raised the taxes that way, and I'm looking at putting it in the ground and having it there for another fifty or sixty years. We, we know that's gonna be there. And that'll take some of the burden off the trucks, you know, equipment, pumps, that kind of thing should be taken out of capital. That, and it should come through taxation, not through the users' views, you know? And I know a lot of people do disagree with that, but the waters run that same way. And the water, the water's offsetting some of the budget also right now.
We also have, uh, union contracts and people to pay. You know, and we have obligated ourselves to, I'm just talking operating, I'm not talking capital. We've obligated ourselves to increases. So we don't want to put ourselves in a situation where Chris finds himself having to really take a very serious look at, at staffing needs as well. And that's what I'm worried about because that's just pure operating. Ultimately, it comes down to people. So just a small, you know, eleven thousand dollars is a part of a person, that's all I'm saying.
And I think we're, you know, projecting this year to be in that ballpark negative, um, the, the budget for sewer. I thought this year we were kind of twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, so plus.
This year, but then next year we're looking at diving below zero.
That was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand in the red for next year.
Next year.
I thought it was just like thirty or forty thousand, I don't know. But anyway.
Wanted to say to everyone that's listening at home when you call me, that if this does not, that our fixes do not make it through town meeting in the fall, everybody's gonna see a rate increase, not just the commercial customers because the commercial customers can't bear it at all, there's way too much money to be raised here. So we need to do this from multiple angles and there's no way to avoid rate increases for everybody. I mean, there's no way to avoid it. It's gonna have to happen, the question is how much and who and when?
Yeah. All right, all those in favor? Oh, wait, Alan, you wanna say one more thing? Closing comment?
We still talking about a public hearing here.
Yeah, 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 the sewer.
So it's not so much on that motion, but on the talk I hear about, well, we will bring something forward to town, oh, to town meeting, there's multiple possible fixes. I, I've only heard one possible fix. I wonder what other ones you've, you are considering for instance, whether, whether the idea of putting this, spreading it out wider on the taxes, just like the water is sort of, was everybody uses water, not everybody uses sewer. But still, the idea of spreading out this, the, the cost of this sewage treatment plant and related things.
We talked about it at our last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, is that gonna be one, so maybe we'll develop, be developed and brought forward because I think that.
We're looking at taking two percent, one percent away from CPA.
That's, that's what I've heard.
Yeah, that's one.
That's the only thing I've heard.
That's one. And then also taking.
Stabilization potentially.
Yeah, taking from stabilization to pay some of the, or to replenish the enterprise bond.
John's idea of other capital.
And then a hundred and paying the, the debt service, uh, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand is how it is on the pumping station debt as well. So to kind of take that pressure off the enterprise bond so that way the hundred twenty-eight can.
You need to be careful with that. And I did say today that you're gonna need to check with DOR's, um, council. Because that could very well come back and bite us. If it hits in the free cash, it's not done already.
And I did some checking on that because that was already built.
It's already in the budget, so.
Going forward, after town meeting, if, if it gets approved in capital, then we can go forward with taking it out of taxation. But I don't know if we can take those two pump stations, they're built, and put them out of taxation.
We can take on new sewer debt.
New sewer debt.
To the tax rate, but not.
Yeah, equipment that has to be.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
To be very careful how you do that.
Yeah.
We don't get it on the other end.
So I will rephrase that. We're looking at ways to pay the debt.
So it's.
Yes, legally.
My one thought is that.
I mean, it's possible, but we need to go about it the proper way.
Yeah, okay. I, I just wanna point out that from my point of view, I, I'm not on the sewer. But I would happily pay to keep that sewage treatment plant up and running because it does benefit the whole town in two ways. Keeps the river clean.
Yeah.
Okay, we all benefit from that. And it makes development possible where you wouldn't otherwise have it. And that benefits the town with the tax rate, so.
This is what I'm trying to say.
Can you come in and stay in the way?
They keep it all fair and about the taxes, but I mean, if it's for a legitimate purpose and it's spread out enough. I mean, and as long as our tax rate still stays the lowest in the county.
All right, we got one guy just on water that's a little bit understandable here.
Do you need to turn it off at town meeting? Okay, so, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No.
No.
Are you voting?
Are you voting, Joe?
Guess I am, no. No, not at this time.
Okay.
After fall town meeting we can.
I'll look at it.
Okay.
Address it again and hopefully we have enough options on the table and it gets voted through where we can.
Hopefully.
Stabilize.
We manage to hopefully.
No, I.
Fingers crossed.
We have a lot of hooking. We need to sell it. I mean, I've had a lot of calls on it already. And like I said, from the, the people that are just on water and, and they, some of them don't wanna offset sewer, but they just don't realize that the malls, the amount of taxes and water and sewer that, that the malls pay or the commercial area pays, it is offsetting our tax rate, big time, for the residents.
I'm getting down the wire here. Go ahead.
Okay, so let's do the, uh, we are asked to open the search for a human resources director. Uh, we started a committee, it's about two meetings ago. I think David and Joyce, you guys were on that committee.
Make a motion to approve opening the search, advertising the search.
We were hoping that if we got the approval tonight, we could get this in the Gazette for this weekend because we can submit it tomorrow morning.
And we have a pay scale with this?
We have a pay, um, budget of seventy thousand dollars.
No, but we have a pay scale, we just went through this whole process of job grade and everything. So shouldn't we be putting that range in?
I don't, I don't typically put that into the job, job notice. That's something.
You don't put any amount in there?
I, I typically don't do that.
Okay.
It's up to the pleasure of the board.
Well, so what happens when somebody wants to apply and they call and they say, how much does it pay?
Put it, we should put a minimum in and then depends on qualifications.
We usually put a ban, I mean, that's kind of the whole idea of coming up with these bans.
So why don't we add?
What was it one?
Yeah.
And make it.
Do we have the range?
Make a broad range.
Yeah, I mean, Don Jacob's.
All right, I'll take, I'll take the information from DIJ and come up with a range.
Is that in range with a seventy thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. So then I'll make a motion to open the search and include a salary range in that.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Looks like I have a range here, so, okay.
Is there a range on yours?
Uh, from his survey.
Oh, you got it over there?
It's thirty-four to forty-three.
No.
No, that can't be right.
An hour?
Oh.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Thirty-four to forty-three.
Per hour, dollars per hour.
Thirty-three dollars per hour.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four an hour?
Yeah, that's what his.
Seventy, okay, so that's, so that would probably be the minimum.
I think they don't, I should think they would be hourly anyway, they would be salaried.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You need to figure it out where, where to start from.
Do you just multiply by two thousand and eighty hours?
So it comes up to seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put a range in there, you know, just start off with the tosses.
Seventy to ninety, that's his range, that was in the.
I did watch.
Okay, so let's move on to.
I just said one thing with the range.
Yeah.
We put, I assume we're gonna put a salary range, not an hourly range.
Yeah.
That would make sense. And then can we also drop it down a bit to have a range so that way we're not?
That's what I said.
Not on the high side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Since we have a budget, that way we can meet that budget.
To do sixty, or sixty to eighty?
Sixty to eighty?
Yeah.
That's what we want?
Yeah.
Good.
Sixty to eighty?
Yep.
Mentor with experience.
Experience, knowledge and education.
Okay.
Dedication.
Yeah.
Senior center library and fire substation updates. Joyce, would you like to go first?
I have.
Fire?
I have my meeting coming up on Tuesday this week.
Okay.
We didn't have it.
They have a fence up? Have they started excavating anything up there? I haven't been by, a few.
Lawn is mowed and.
They were putting, uh, dials for erosion control and things.
The driveways in, the construction driveways in.
Nice.
So, looks like there's progress happening.
Okay. Library, do you guys wanna go, are you ready?
I was trying to get my daily report up here.
Oh, I can hold on to.
So, uh, basically, uh, well, the library building committee is actually meeting for the first time in a while on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, uh, but things are moving along with the, there was some delays with the, um.
Water line. The excavation for the water line.
Excavation, thank you. That was, that was the big word I was looking for, the excavation for the, for the water lines. So I think we're a little bit behind, but I have to get.
That's the big hole on the corner here.
With the big bucket load right next to it, yeah.
I saw six guys staring at that hole for a long time today.
Yeah, that's. It wasn't bad when they first installed it in seventy-six, but when they came through on the drain line in the nineties, that's when they kinda.
Oh, and they started.
Storm sewer tying, is that what they're doing?
The window abatement was started yesterday.
No, that's all water.
Water tying.
Is this library?
Yep.
I never saw.
Yep.
And when, when, do we think the building's coming down, do we know?
I don't know that we have an estimate.
It's coming back.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So I know that last week Gary was told two weeks to finish the abatement.
Yeah.
And realistically, it's not even, it's gonna be way longer than two weeks based on, on what is left. So it could be two months.
Oh, wow.
Two months.
Well, it might not be, but it's a long time.
Yeah, both have a better handle, I think, when we have direct dialogue with the OPM on Monday night and, so.
Okay.
More to come, but I, there's no question we're experiencing some delays.
Okay. Um, senior, I can let Jane do the update?
I think it's very exciting, we have walls up and drive-by. Trusses were delivered today and the framing crew is really working quickly and seems to be quite competent.
So the floor, the whole floor is poured?
Floor is a cord.
Floor is poured.
It's turning into something over there.
It looks like a building. Um, and the, um, they took the samples for the asbestos soil samples and they also tested back beyond where they stopped finding asbestos and they think it's fairly much contained in that front.
It's on that north side of the library, and it was the side of Hooker.
North side of Hooker.
Yeah.
It's smaller, yeah.
Well, it's not a huge area. I don't know if it's smaller than what, but it's not huge.
And then we have, uh, one change order I'd like to process tonight. Basically, it's increased material costs to provide an additional twelve pound per square foot design load for the roof trusses. Um, and this was somewhere along the line. It got missed to have the addition of solar panel load on the roof and it's for three thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety cents. Don't know if I got on the motion just to approve that. Normally we approve it at our finance committee, but we don't have that, um, until beginning of next month. Um, so we just wanted to kind of get the slate clean between now and the, the next, next meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
My only question is, solar panels way next to the mountain now. So with the designs factored that type, that they can.
Solar panels in every house.
Well, they want the metal roof too.
I'm not sure exactly how that, yeah, I don't know.
Metal roof, have you heard any asphalt panels? Over in the.
You got that flack?
It is?
I don't know, I think it was.
Well, the support under it, yeah.
That was heavy.
All right, all those in, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then the last thing I have on our regular agenda here is the.
For really the, uh, the building projects, there's a number of questions coming from the departments about the inspector's fees, water and sewer fees for connections, inspections and impact assessments for these three projects. Typically, we waive these, but the department heads are just asking for clarity that we are in fact waiving all of them for all the inspections.
Motion that we waive.
Waive all the violations that are under our.
Yeah, that's, that is. We include the electrical, we typically allow the electrical, like.
I, I think we should waive them all.
I second that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Update on the Legion work?
No.
No.
It's gonna happen Friday.
Yeah, no, 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 the sewer line was inspected.
Right.
That was all fine.
And it turned out fine, so.
Okay, so that's good.
And, and the Legion members were there, so they were happy with it.
Okay. Town administrator update?
Okay.
Joyce just wants you to do the highlights.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just doing. Today's highlights, I'm just touched on a lot of this stuff and it's here to be read. Uh, cemetery marker assessment, uh, project is substantially complete. The, we met with the, uh, the, uh, owners of the retail marijuana facility and talked about a community host agreement that is still in process. Uh, we had a kickoff meeting for the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. Uh, and November sixth, if you could put that in your calendar, that is the community meeting that will, um, have everything to do with trying to, uh, get input from the community as to how climate change may or may not impact quality of life in the town of Hadley. Anything having to do with agriculture, drainage, um, the dike.
Is there a meeting?
You may be having a meeting that night, but this would be a daytime meeting.
What day is it, November nine?
Sixth.
Oh, sixth, sorry. Oh, and we're already, okay.
Personnel handbook, uh, we had our intern, our assistant update that, that's now under review. Capital asset study is underway now for inventory of the small items for, within our capital plan. Dish cleaning has been launched. Marlo Warner and I are playing phone tag with respect to the anaerobic digester. The stormwater permit, uh, we continue to work with PBPC to get the, um, compliance and this, uh, informational brochure addresses issues of lawn maintenance and lawn fertilization on such a way as to, uh, preserve community water, particularly the Connecticut River.
Does that maybe go to the next water bill? Does that maybe include an X water bill?
Something, it's online, uh, and there's a stack of brochures downstairs in town hall. Just skipping way ahead. Uh, we received the actuarial report for O P E B and the, uh, the results are good. Uh, we saw the total liability decrease by eighty thousand dollars. We saw our discount rate rise from six and three quarters to, no, six, up to six and three quarters, up from five and three quarters from last year. And a higher rate is a good thing. Uh, the treasurer's approach to investing our annual contribution netted more money than town's overall contribution, appropriation by about seventy-one thousand dollars, thank goodness, Anderson. And our total trust fund shows an increase to above nineteen percent funding for the liability, up from almost fifteen percent to last year. So we're doing very, very well. Uh, we'll be meeting with our actuary tomorrow morning and order the chart, of course, going forward. And I am going to say that we've covered all the other issues.
Announce us?
So one in the paper tonight, Bishop O C P passed away and all assisted her family. So, can I go with Legion?
Yeah, I was gonna say I'd chicken to go at, at Legion. You can buy tickets, uh, from Legion members. It's August twenty-fifth, pick up at four P M. It's a Sunday.
They're only doing one?
That's, well, I got a ticket for that. There might be more than one pickup, I'm not sure.
It's usually one in four.
One in four, yeah, so there's probably two, yeah.
Still have to call Mr. Ben Ben and see how the tickets are. Surprised my husband didn't bring him home.
Yeah, Men's Club's having an event September thirteenth, a steak dinner.
I don't know.
Another thing I saw come through.
And CPA, uh, those applications are due August ninth. That's this Friday. North Haven Village Hall, bids are due August twenty-fourth?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh? So, get something there. Trying to think if there's any other dates.
Hadley Sugar Shack, are they having a bicycle event?
August tenth?
August tenth, this Saturday.
Mm-hmm. I think that's everything I can think of.
Lots to do, it's a happy new ten.
Yeah, lots to do. School starts, I think, the twenty-eighth here.
Before Labor Day.
So.
And then it's demolition derby time.
Truck pulls are on?
That's right.
Okay. And then we have an executive session.
Before we go into executive session, there's one item under the Mount Holyoke branch. Uh, you have a volunteer to serve on the committee to draft the conservation registrations.
And this is.
Two volunteers, I think we're missing.
Oh, Mount Holyoke branch, oh, okay.
Yeah, and there was another one.
Mayor there had submitted that she was interested to, I don't know.
Yeah, and Harb, uh, O'Connor as well. That's what I was asking you earlier. I was getting confused about which.
Yeah, I skipped over it because I thought the Kestrel Trust was gonna be here, so I apologize for that. Yeah, we have, uh, John Michkowski Junior volunteers to serve on the committee. And then we have a couple more possible people as well. Do we want to vote on this tonight?
Well, we don't even have.
Do we have a, or wait until we have a full list?
Yeah, we'll, we'll wait.
Cause it sounds like we have five to choose from now, four or five.
Can I ask how many do you need?
One, I think, that was it.
How many are gonna be on the committee?
We had someone from Kestrel, myself, a community member, and who else? Two more, or what else?
I forget what it was.
A couple of community members. All right, maybe two community members.
So you're looking for one or two community members?
Yeah.
Put my name in, David.
Yeah, if you just, do you wanna send a letter to him? It could just be an email? Yeah.
I think we should all stand in solidarity with our.
Okay. And then we, and then now we can, uh, move to executive session.
I'm going to one.
You are?
I am.
Okay.
Do you want to defer this to, uh, September?
Do we have an executive session with the, I believe we have on schedule at our next meeting, correct?
Yes, we do, D B W.
Coming back, so can we do it that? Can I do so?
If you guys wanna do it then, yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have to act on night until December thirty-first, so.
We can talk about it whenever we want.
All right, then can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Anything to sign before I go?
All right, so there are signatures.